I'd like to call the order of the regular meeting of the Algonquin Community Schools Board of Education on Monday, November 27th. Please rise for pledge allegiance in a moment of silence.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Little call, please.
William Brady. Phil Clark.
Here.
Daniel Emery.
Here.
Jennifer Baker.
Here.
Andrew Bligh. John Highstreet.
Here.
Kansas Vasco.
Here.
Thank you. We have a couple of recognitions and presentations. First up is Mr. Kenny Ripun for our audit review.
Good evening, everybody. I am Kenny Ripun from Angeles, Louisiana, CPAs, which is the I-3 Brown High School. I just want to start this by saying thank you for having me tonight and thanks, Kenny, for having us come out to the audit review. This is one that I always report from down here, Dorothy, Al, the board's office. Everyone's so friendly, so helpful. It's a very clean job. We're in and out, but we're very happy with that. That helps us on the back end. So for Kenny, I just want to say thank you to them for coming here and thank you to the board for having us again. So I have to pass out the paper and have you have a presentation? And I did realize we had the screen available here over your PowerPoint. We'll do it that way. I like that a lot better than putting through paper. So we've looked through the second page of the paper and work. We have here the audit and opinion. With this presentation, basically, if you take anything away, it's this page and the next page. That's sort of the meat of the presentation. Algonquin received a clean unmodified opinion this year, which is the highest level of assurance you can get. What that means is after the audit received, we performed, the financial statements and our opinion were free of any material misstatements. So they can be relied upon. They are materially accurate. We did not know any control issues. So we do not give an opinion on the internal controls for the district, but we do review them. We do do walkthroughs, so testing a couple of checks, testing a couple of receipts, making sure those controls are working as intended and they are in place. And we did not note any issues there. We gave no opinion, but we do, if we ever see anything, we'll give our recommendations to proof the controls if, again, anything we see. I don't think we've ever had a history of anything, any issues there, as long as I've been at Algonquin. I think I've been coming down here for seven years now. So that's always been very good. And then the last item there is Gatsby 96. So I remember last year, we had Gatsby 87, was a new standard revolving how leases were reported to the state. 96 is the exact same, copy and paste, but for the online subscriptions. We did not have any here, so that did not affect the financials whatsoever, but new standard, we're required to talk about it. So we've looked at the next page, is another audit opinion. This one's with our single audit. So when a district has more than $750,000 of federal revenues, they're required to have a single audit, which is a deeper dive into the federal programs, testing the compliance with those programs, testing the internal controls in place there, and verifying that we are in compliance with all of the regulations that the government's put in place for those programs. This year, we tested the ester funds, which is all the active ester funds. I forget which ones we had here, maybe it's ester two and three. Those are kind of starting to wind down, but that took about 34% of the total federal revenues for the district. And again, clean opinion here, no findings noted, no control issues noted, so another job will come in. So we've looked at this next page. We're just recapping the change in fund balance across all the funds here. Really big ones, the general funds. We finished at about just over $5 million, which if we take the assigned portion out, which is any monies that we have that are for a specific purpose, takes us out to about 21%. If we flip to this next page, recapping the general fund revenues. So the total of 19.6 million in revenues. About 61% came from our state sources, so our state aid, and then 26 came from our locals, so they won their prop taxes. And then another 11% from federal revenue. So again, just breaking down where those revenues are coming in for the general fund specifically. And we flip to the next page, we're looking at the general fund expenditures now. So up to $19 million here. There's, the state of Michigan has the accounting manual, breaks down the expenditures at different levels. Here we see it by function code, which the big ones here are the instruction and support. So we see about 55% of the total expenditures went towards the instruction of the students. 40% went towards the support. So let's say like a cent's of a dollar. So in total, that's 95 cents for every dollar went towards the support and instruction of the students. So for a district that's a good number. We like to see that. The next page, same expenditures we're looking at, this time by object code, so it's just another layer that we can filter by essentially. Big ones here, 42% for the salaries for our staff and 34% for the benefits. So that's about 76 cents in every dollar went towards these salaries and benefits for our staff. The next big chunk here being our purchase services. Historically, we've always said about 75 to 80% is a good, is about the average for our salaries and benefits. In recent years, we've seen that move towards more contracted services, so that's really started to fluctuate, but here it's, again, pretty, I'd say, pretty comparable to districts that are not fully invested in contracted services. This next page, we're going over our budget to actual. So our RFP standards require us to compare the final budget to the final expenditures and just see where we're at. Obviously, there are requirements from the state of Michigan for not going over budget by too much, so that's one item specifically we're looking at. So in a nutshell, came in about $450,000 under budget for our revenues, so about 2%, but we came in at 1.8 million under budget for our expenses, which went from a projected, so budgeted $778,000 deficit to our fund balance, actually finished with about a $600,000 increase to fund balance. So that budget to actual, or yes, was a positive difference for the district. So no real issues there. Next page, we're just recapping the debt of the district. Largest portion here is our general obligation bond, so that's all of our refundings we saw over the past years. This next chunk being the other employee obligations, which is our compensation absences and termination payments for our debt. This last page is everyone's favorite, the Vexers pension and OPEC liabilities. I will lead it with this. This has no effect on the general fund. This is basically just an adjustment on the financial reporting. The state wants it. They used to report this on their books. They spread it across all the districts in the state of Michigan, so now every district reports their portion of the unfunded liability on their financials. So the government-wide financials will see a large deficit. It's fake. It's just, you're not going to have that money due, the state just wants you to show it. So to put it in perspective, the Vexers unfunded liability right now is sitting at $37 billion and the OPEC is sitting at $2.1 billion, and that is with a P. So a lot of liability hanging around there, but again, the state's not going to come knocking tomorrow and pay us your $29 million. So that does conclude the presentation. Again, I want to say thank you to the business office, thank you Dorothy, the staff, Al. Again, obviously, we see here, everything was clean. It is a very easy job for us. Dorothy keeps a very tight set of books, cleaning, she knows where everything is, so we always, we do like this one a lot for those specific reasons. So with that, do we have any questions?
Just do want to, again, thank you, Kenny, for every time, no matter who comes out from your group, always just ask great questions, good, you know, just good people to meet with, and we certainly enjoy that and enjoy you guys coming. I mean, as much as you can enjoy an audit, we enjoy you coming out.
We like to say auditors are people, too.
Yeah. That's fair, and we appreciate that. Dorothy, thanks so much again. Dorothy and I have lots of conversations, as you know, about this stuff, and, you know, she's the best one I've ever worked with, without a doubt, so I appreciate it, Dorothy.
Thanks, Dorothy.
Yeah, excellent job.
Thank you, major staff, all, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Kenny. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care of your foot.
Is that shoe water?
It is my water.
He just wanted to do a laugh. Auditors are people, too. There he is.
And then up next, we have a school safety discussion. You want to kick us off now?
Yeah, sure. Back a while back, and it was shortly after Bill and John got on, we kind of had a little bit of a discussion about school safety, and obviously, it's a topic you could, we could talk daily about it and we can, you know, talk about that. I mean, every meeting, we could have a discussion on this, but especially, you know, for a couple of newcomers. John's a little bit different. He's been in the school, he's been through the training, some of these kind of things, but I think it's important just as a board, you know, I mean, obviously, when we look at this stuff, there are certain things that we keep close to the vest because some of that, you know, you don't tip your whole hand when you're talking about school safety. There's things that's very important, you know, as an administrative staff and as a teaching staff, that we are aware of certain things in place where, you know, you might not want the general public to know some of this, and I say that only for the fact that when I say general public, I'm not talking about the Algonquin community, I'm talking about the bad actors that this, you know, potentially could draw. My point today was to make sure that, A, the school board and B, the public does know, yes, we do have plans and protocols in place, yes, we do train our staff, and yes, we do run drills with our students where they know it. So today, I wanted to bring in, and I asked Dave as the resource officer to be part of this as well. Dave certainly has a background. He's now one of the trainers for active shooter drills. In fact, we just had one Wednesday here at the school that I told you about, which is, it's a great thing, you know, just really, they're really cracking down, really bearing down on it over Clay Township and then with the principals, just kind of within their own building, because, you know, we have Melissa, who's in a K-1 building versus Ryan, who's in a 712 building, and you're, what you would expect a 7th through 12th grader, how you can ask them to react to something that's not exactly the same as a K-1 student. And so I think that, you know, just their different perspectives will bring a little bit of light to what we do, too. So I'm going to turn it over to you guys and feel free to run us through.
Presentation.
All right. So thank you for having me here today. And some of you that don't know me, my name's Dave Mahardo. I've been at Clay Township now just under 10 years, went with the law enforcement for about 25 years. We've got, what our worst training is now, we've kind of morphed from the ALIS program to this ARC program, which is an active assailant response training. So it's very similar to ALIS, we just kind of changed the name a little bit of the dynamics. It's got the same protocols where we teach our children and our faculty how to react if or when there is that threat. So what this does is it gives them choices on how to survive that situation. It kind of puts tools back in their field to be able to kind of have, take control over a situation that typically is, there's no control whatsoever. It gives everybody an idea, okay, we do have something that we can do, we're not just sitting here, we're not just waiting for something to happen. We can kind of come back and now we're taking control of what our outcome is and how we have the, what we can do to best prepare our kids and our staff. So basically, what we do in this program is we teach survival techniques. What do we do? How do we lock down doors? What are options are? How do we get people in and out? What do we have available in our, in our buildings, in our classrooms, in our settings? And it doesn't, this doesn't just stop here at a school. You can utilize this at any place of worship, whether you're at Kroger's or at the Dollar Store. All of this goes into play anywhere you're at. So what this does is it just helps give you those techniques to be able to hopefully survive that situation. It, we teach, it helps you kind of indicate what kind of first aid techniques we may need, whether it's a tourniquet, stop the bleed, whatever comes up, we try to get that out there to make sure that everybody's ready in cases happens. So if it does happen, we don't scramble, we don't have a plan. And at the end of the day, we're trying to keep everybody as calm as possible. Obviously, it's just a chaos, and we know that's going to happen, but by having plans and having tools in place, it helps give us those methods to be able to work through it without having to just throw caution to the wind and start going out and just try to do whatever we want. The different things that we teach is you have to evaluate the situation, what's going on, where's the threat at, how do we respond to it? We alarm people, we notify, are we going to barricade in place? Are we going to, what we want to do is take back control of our area, right? Worst-case scenario, we have to fight our way out. But if we don't teach how to be able to do that, we're not helping anybody. And this obviously is different for every level that we have. Like Mr. Latos said, I can't teach the same things to Melissa's classroom or students that I would to Ryan's. Obviously, it's all kind of generated off of what's in the buildings and who's in the building. You know, if and when there's a time that we can escape, we do that. If and when we're able to lock down or we leave the area, when do we start doing first aid? All of these things are kind of discussed, and we come back and talk about this and try to make sure we have a game plan so when it happens, everybody is as calm and cool and collected as it could be to be able to take care of this. And this all kind of starts with us here bringing it into the teachers to make sure that they have these tools to be able to make sure that when it happens, they know the kids are going to look to them, so they're as calm as they possibly can be. You have, the human response, you have four different things. We can fight, which obviously, we know, you're either going to engage and you're going to take back your situation, you're going to run away, you're going to freeze in place, or you're just going to fawn and comply with whatever the threat tells you. We want to stay away from the fawning and the freezing, because if that's the case, we're not really taking back control of our situation. So what we want to do, we want to teach them to at least fight or flight or have control and understand that you have options. Just because you're unfortunate and have to be placed in that situation, doesn't mean you just have to comply and go along with it. We want you to be able to fight back and be able to go home. At the end of the day, that's what we want, is to minimize as much, as much bad as possible. We want everybody to go home, and that's what we try to teach. The objectives that we have as law enforcement obviously are different from what we teach the faculty and the staff. Our job, our main job and only job at that point is if this is happening, to eliminate the threat, whether it's by excessive, the force necessary to take out the threat, or we're able to neutralize the threat by having them turn themselves over and just, and give up. After that, we run a first aid, you know, and we evacuate people as soon as possible. And then at the very end of all of that, once we know that we've got everybody out, everybody's in custody, everybody's got the medical care taken, then we come back in and we start investigating what's going on. At the very end of what we worry about is the investigation. Our number one priority is stop the threat, get people to safety, and get the medical care needed so they can go home to their loved ones. And obviously, as a department, we're taking the steps, we've just gone through where we've trained every one of our officers up on the most latest current techniques for active assailant training. We utilize a building here, and thank you for allowing us to use that, because that's, obviously, if heaven forbid this happens, this is a good possibility that's going to happen in our building. So our officers are now very familiar with this building by being able to run through these drills and work through the scenarios and work through these trying things to see what's going to happen and how it's going to happen. We've incorporated different things where we're going to be working with the fire department as well as tri hospital EMS and the school here to hopefully have a full-fledged scenario-based training to where we have everybody incorporated so we can see what works and what doesn't work. These are all things that are coming down the line that we're working on as a department and with the school. If there's any questions that I can answer or somebody wants the training, please don't hesitate, let me know. We will, Chief Coach is very good about letting us get together, get things set up and get people trained and have them have the information we have. Like Mr. Latos said, there is certain information that we don't pass out just because certain things we have to keep close to heart because it's what keeps our kids safe. Any emergency plan we do, it is sent, like it's put together by staff here, Mr. Latos, it's approved by us and set up to the emergency.
Preparedness.
Preparedness, emergency operations, emergency management, and they go through and certify as well to make sure that we've got all the checks and balances. I believe that's pretty much what we got from ours. I'll turn it over to Mr. Melrose, because he can kind of, I'll let them talk about what we do in each building, and if there's any questions that I can answer after that, I'll try to tie it in.
Yeah, and then, so at the high school, beginning of the year, we have our first PD, Dave's always there, kind of review with staff, kind of what we do, the processes with that. Beyond that, I always have Dave touch base with all of our new teachers to make sure, he meets with them individually, make sure that they feel comfortable with what they can do. And also, we always open it up, the teachers, any year of our, or teachers need to talk to them about anything, have any questions about anything, that he meets with them. And again, we do that yearly. And then in the middle of the year, one of our PDs will also kind of be doing more depth again, review of our processes and what we do here in the building. And again, we, every year, we do that, at least the three minimum required by the state, and after every time, we share with the staff what we observed, you know, what things we could be working on, what things we, you know, those type of things, but it's, we, again, this is a process we've been doing year after year.
So at Algonquin, we do those same types of things. Obviously, it looks a tad different with younger kids, but we will come on and say the threat is, you know, by the gym. And so teachers and students at that point, they get to make a decision. Are we going to exit the building? Like if you're closer by Millside, some of them will do that, and if you're closer to the threat, you just hunger down and stay in there. So we really try to make different scenarios each time, so they aren't thinking on their feet for that.
At Millside, we get the little littles. So we definitely spend a lot of time practicing. We practice lots of different ways, and we really practice listening to the staff member and making sure they're aware that it's only a staff member you know, it's not another adult that you don't know. A lot of it's that barricading in place or that flight depending on the scenario, but really being able to have them listen and just practice without scaring them at times. So they do a nice job of what they're doing.
And I think, Melissa, that's a, you know, worthy thing to point out, too, you know, the reality of it is, we obviously want everyone to be prepared, but, you know, these are kindergarten first graders and then second through sixth graders, and, you know, this stuff's very real for them and it should be, but at the same point, we want them to be excited to come to school. We don't, we don't want this to be a threatening place. We want this to be somewhere where they're safe. And, you know, when we handle it with the staff and let them know, hey, this is, this is in the long run, this is for you, this is in case anything happened. But, you know, the idea to be able to make sure they understand that this is not something that's normal, this is, this is beyond what normal would look like.
We practice a threat inside and a threat outside, and they draw their own deductions of what it is, and they're sure that we're practicing in case a bear gets them to school because they've seen that in the last coming year. Yeah, they come up with their own analysis, so.
Any questions for Dave or Ryan or Melissa?
I was curious, is there anything that you could share from, like, is there a communication plan in place as to, in the event that you're dealing with something in the schools and you've got parents in the community wondering what's going on, or us board members getting calls and things like that? Is there a communication approach?
Well, and I guess I could kind of go back a little bit, last year, the situation at Algonquin, where it was a soft lockdown. We thought, you know, there was the potential, which we found out in short order wasn't necessarily true, but in that scenario, you know, we're pretty, pretty good at disseminating information, I feel, but you don't want to send out the wrong information. And so I know parents and I know people want to know instantly because they heard something's taking place in the schools, and, you know, to me, it's more important to get the right information out there. And that information usually comes through my office, it'll be with, you know, the building and me, and then we'll, obviously, with police involved and that type of thing, but that information will come from us and it'll come through Facebook, it'll come through the website, and then obviously, we'll put it out, blast it out, how we normally put out our information, but it all filters through central office. Phil is kind of to answer the question.
Would you ever use the, like, the system when you get a day off of school, like that kind of system?
Yeah, again, once I think.
Because I, I mean, I'll listen to Facebook, but I want to hear something from the school.
Yeah, yeah. No, and that's fair, and that's, but again, once we have, we know we're safe, we feel good about, we have a grip on what we just saw and what happened, you know, obviously, all those are going to be a little bit different, but again, to me, it's getting the right information out.
Dave, could you explain the difference between, like, shelter in place, lockdown, active threat? Like, if we see something come up and say, the school, there's a shelter in place going on at the school, like, as board members, people contact us, so we can explain to them what a shelter in place means.
So we've kind of gotten away from a little bit, like, just calling things lockdowns. We've gone more to plain talk. So if there's something going on, the teachers, the faculty, somebody's going to come across and there's an active threat, there's a subject with a gun, there's a subject, armed subject outside, so you're going to kind of understand where we got, kind of what we have. So if we're sheltering in place, that means that we could have something that the police are involved in, whether it's domestic, or something that kind of amps security up a little bit outside, where we're kind of keeping the building locked down, but kind of keeping business as usual, where teachers are still teaching, teachers still switching classrooms. And we've done this a couple of times, where we've done this err on the side of caution because we can answer as to why we do something, we can't answer as to why we didn't. If there's a barricaded situation, was it a couple of years back, we had the hunter that kind of came through the parking lot where we had, not really realizing that they're supposed to be on school grounds, obviously, we barricaded in place until we ruled that out. So it just depends, everything is situational based, there's really no, this is how you're going to do it, when you're going to do it type answer. I can't give you a guaranteed, like, 100% why or when it's going to happen, it's all going to be situational based, as to the information we have is readily available is what we got. What I can tell you is myself, Mr. Melrose, or myself and Brooke and Melissa, that information, when we have it, we have it distant, like, I don't hold it near and dear to me, I get it out to them immediately. If I've got something here, I call them. If I'm at home and we have something, we're sharing the information constantly. There's nothing that, that I keep unless it's to the point where I'm told I can't. We try to communicate as much as possible so everybody's on the same page as we're going. And Mr. Latos says, I mean, the phone calls are going constant between either myself and one of them, or him and Chief Coach, or somebody is always in the line relaying the information as to what we have and why we're doing it. If you get something where you hear a shelter in place, I'm sure as a school board, you're probably going to have, maybe have a little bit more as to why we're doing what we're doing. And again, all of us will agree on the same thing, we would err on the side of caution and lock it down because we can answer as to why we did that. It may create a little bit of disturbance for the time, but we can't answer why we didn't, if something else were to happen.
And it's a tricky time because that's, you know, people wanting, obviously, they don't want just that we're sheltered in place, they want the details and they want them, like, five minutes ago, and, you know, so sometimes those minutes seem like they are, it just, the time gets away, but at the same point, again, I go back to make sure we're safe here, make sure we've got it under control here, then we'll get to that next part about getting the right information out there.
I think, though, just to initially contact the parents and say that there is something going on, just won't be details as we, you know, later, at a later date, but this is what's happening, because kids have phones and they'll text their mom and say, you know.
And we have, like I said, with that scenario, things out all as quick as we could. And you've got to understand, like, from a law enforcement side, we've had issues, maybe not in our jurisdiction, but others, as soon as they've sent information out, the Facebook phone games started going on and it started creating the delay in actually apprehending the suspect, because people would be on, oh my gosh, he just went by my house, he went past here. Well, if we're all monitoring, guess who else is? Bad guy. So we have to be careful with what information goes out until we know that we are in control of what's going on as much as we can. So it will be generated as quickly and as accurately as possible to make sure that everybody understands that kids are safe.
Is there any way to let parents know, like, if there is a situation, like, don't come to the school, you know, like?
Yeah.
Don't call Jan a five time, 500 times, you know what I mean?
Usually, it's me getting to Jan and making sure that we have something out there, like Jan has said, not necessarily the details, but something that we're in, you know, a lockdown or there's a lockdown situation, more details to follow. That would be where you, where you would get that information.
Other questions for Dave?
It's a, it's a very fluid thing. It does change, we do constantly tweak, we can, you know, Dave has been, you know, this is, you know, we're only probably eight years away from everything was shelter in place and it was lock the door and barricade and don't move until it's time to move, and we've certainly adjusted to that along the way. As a society, we're, we're now more about if there's an opportunity to get out, we're going to get out, and that was something that, I mean, I know when I was in school doing drills, and it might have been a couple of years ago, but it was always bury yourself, lock in and hope something doesn't happen.
Do have a question, not regarding the drill itself, but mitigating the need for a drill in the first place. Is there any? Is there any talk of a program or anything to put in place where there's communication regarding events that might be troublesome at Speedway that might flow into the school? You know what I mean?
So, let me see if I got this right. So, do we have anything in place where if we have something external that's relayed to the school right away, is that?
I'm saying something happened over the weekend. Whoever did something at the gas station, whatever. Some people work there, you know, they go to school here. They come to school on Monday. They're traumatized, but the kids don't know, the, the staff doesn't know. You know, shouldn't somebody be, there be some sort of something in place to have communication?
Our department does a very good job if something happens with one of our students through the weekend, or anytime after hours when I'm not there, to make sure they email me, text me, call me, and contact me right away with that information. And at that point, I immediately relay it to our staff here, the administration. Typically, if something comes in, we meet, if it involves the high school, we meet first thing in the morning to get a game plan going. So we're above trying to head off at the, at the, as it comes in.
Even like, I don't know, even like domestic things, if somebody's?
Absolutely. And you got to realize, sometimes some of the information is protected information that we can't necessarily discuss.
Yeah, but somebody might be sleeping on the desk or something, and.
But absolutely, if we have information that comes up like that, we do discuss ninety-nine point nine percent of the things that involve our students. Uh, because our job here, obviously, my included, is to make sure that they have the most peaceful way that they can. Come here for one thing, one thing only, is to learn, but we also understand that sometimes this is a safe spot for them, and we try to make sure that we accommodate as much of that as we possibly can. Um, they know that my door is always open, and they can come in, and if they're having problems, they, they, they stay there. They do what they need to do until they're ready to go back to class. Uh, we create a very good working structure with the students, where they know that that's valid.
And I, I think this building has done a very good job with, um, when we do get that information on the weekend, because it happens a lot. You know, we, we'll get a phone call on a Sunday, and, you know, um, you know, Ryan, not only checking in with, um, you know, meeting with each other, but checking in with the students that it pertains to, and letting them know, hey, there's somebody here you can talk to, there's a counselor here, there's this is available. Um, that happens quite a bit, probably more than people imagine. We can allow that stuff on a Sunday, Saturdays.
Well, thank you for sharing that. It's a heavy topic, but it's reassuring to kind of get a view into how you guys see it.
And like you said, if something comes up where you want more training, or you want to go into a little more detail, please let me know, I'll be unsure if I can say something.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next up is consent agenda item. Would anyone like to make a motion?
A motion that the Board of Education approves all consent agenda items, including agenda minutes, personnel items, treasuries report, and bills as listed items A through C. Support?
If you can support it, any questions, comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. First information item is a clinic update with policies, Mr. Tote's.
Yep, um.
Am I looking at, are you looking at, November twenty-seventh?
I have my clip, I have that under my report, so that's okay. We can talk about that. Uh, the policies I'm going to have for you tomorrow, because we're going to go over the, um, other policies and the, and the guidelines, so I figured that'd be a good one for you guys to take. So we'll cover that tomorrow. The clinic, on the other hand, is open. Um, we did a soft opening last week, and, um, maybe tomorrow, if you're interested, I'd like to take you down and give you a little tour down there, if you're interested, before we have our meeting, just to show you around. We opened up to the students, let them do kind of a soft walk through right now. There, there's still a few things that were, um, technology-wise, that they need to get through, done through the health department, the RISA, that they need to get going full up and running, but we're, uh, we're about ninety percent there right now. Uh, place looks great. I think we've got a very good onsite practitioner down there. She seems like she's, uh, very on top of things. I think she'll be good for kids that need it at the school. Certainly, we've talked as a board several times. I don't know how busy that clinic will be, but, um, certainly something that I think is a good idea for our kids, and a good idea to see, um, you know, how much use can we get out of that, so I'll keep you posted. And like I said, tomorrow, I'll share a few policies with you too, some things that we've talked about before, but, um, that they need some consent from us.
Is it five days a week, just during school?
Just three days, right now, yep. Um, and they're always willing to schedule some things, you know, around. Um, I look for, like, for example, um, you know, food, food shack clinics, or in the, in the fall, uh, physicals, that type of stuff, like, sports physicals, so.
And how long has it been, this soft opening?
Just, uh, not last week, the week prior, on, on the Wednesday, they did a soft opening, and, um, you know, of course, the short week last week, just Monday, Tuesday. Their, their, their hope is that, um, after Christmas, they'll really kind of get up and, and run it with it, and then at that point, we'll have, uh, everything kind of in place.
So, correct, way too early to tell, and what any?
Way too early, I would think, yep.
And then that covered, so the Neola policy update tomorrow?
No, we'll do that one today, because we have to have a first reading on that today. Um, so the update, when I met with Wayne, it, this one ended up only being five policies. Um, and, and in a lot of cases, these were just some verbiage added to things. And I, I'll just run through them real quick for you, and if you have questions, because there are a couple that are worth pointing out. Um, and then, of course, we have the AI one on there with some suggested language. And I thought, the way that they present their policies, um, I really liked it. Um, and I was hoping you guys did a look at it too, but it really gives a scenario as to, um, you know, basically, it talks about, yes, they can use it, yes, it is probably good, but it's got to be at the, um, discretion of the teacher and, and that type of stuff. So, uh, I, I really think the language, they, they nailed it in there. But, uh, just real quick, um, the first one, administrative staff reduction recalls. Basically, just talks about when filling or recalling an administrator, um, from a vacancy, from a layoff, whatever the case is. Uh, used to be, old language would say that it's based solely on seniority, not the case anymore. Um, other factors could be involved. If all was equal, seniority would be your fallback, but, um, you know, qualification, certification, qualification at certain levels, that type of stuff, performance, you know, effective versus ineffective, that kind of thing. So, um, just the wording really changed in that policy. Nothing really new with that. Uh, the online and blended learning one is a revised policy. It removed, uh, the language from regarding student eligibility for blended learning, and adds some language for students taking virtual classes under the new Michigan law. Provides language for virtual, or required by law for virtual class, and districts may provide online instruction for up to fifteen days per year. And that's just kind of, um, when we were in the shutdown with the COVID stuff, and we had to shut down for X amount. Remember, we ran into those pupil accounting things where we didn't know, you know, they, they were out of the building for a certain amount of days, how many days, when we could still count the students, and that type of stuff, and so this cleans it up a little bit.
Is that a statewide policy, the up to fifteen days?
Yes, yep. Um, the next one's an interesting one. It's, it's the weapons one, and if you remember, a while back, um, this was when open carry was, was being discussed quite a bit in schools, and, and challenged in some districts. Um, and at the point, at that point in time, um, there was, there was not, the state law did not necessarily line up with a lot of people's board policies. And so now, um, the Ann Arbor case, those sit in there, and also the Clydeau case, which is basically, we as a school board can exercise the right to say, this is a weapon-free school zone. People could carry, open carry, you know, in the park, but within a thousand feet, we are a weapons-free school zone. We make that decision on who would carry in our buildings. Um, obviously, law enforcement would be one, and they talk about, um, uh, let's see, law enforcement, retired, retired law enforcement, and then, um, county corrections or sheriff. So, again, at our discretion, as opposed to having people come in. What, what they found was, a lot of people were, um, you know, coming in, in, in a lot of cases, it was just disruptive to the law, you know, law enforcement, disruptive to the students, scary for some students, and just wasn't a place that we wanted to see that happen, so. Um, the language in there is pretty much all tried to test illegally.
And it's mostly just changing of words, right?
And, and just adds, yeah, adds those two, adds those two paragraphs. Uh, student technology acceptable use, if you see, there's only two words in there that are changed. Um, so nothing on that, was just more of a grammatical kind of deal. Information, information, security, same thing, data information is the only two words that they've added to that. It's the exact same policy, other than same thing that we've had in place. And then the very last one deals with free and reduced meals. Um, language has been changed in that one to reflect the fact that we're now doing free meals in the buildings, and all that comes with it, so. What I'd ask is, and especially when you're talking about the AI one, just ask that before we do a final read on those, you take a look at that, and, and if there's any questions that you have, or anything that you think that, um, we should be considering beyond that. Like I said, I felt very comfortable with the language in that. Um, but certainly, that's just one man's opinion, so certainly, if the board has any ideas on anything they'd like to see changed with that, feel free to let me know, and we can have a discussion prior to adopting these at the December meeting.
Did Wayne give you any feedback about, does he expect most of the Neola customers are adopting that AI language?
Hundred percent, yep, yep, hundred percent. He felt real comfortable with it. He said, now, it, again, it's always board preference, um, but him, in, they give you enough wiggle room in that to where, again, it's at the discretion of the teacher, at the discretion of administration, on how much and when we use it, but certainly not to shut it down, because it's a tool.
I did, um, when we, I was going to put it in my board report, but when we went to the leadership conference, they were discussing AI, and it was recommended also that, um, we reread all of it, because we need to make sure that we're not doing anything that's private data, or anything being used with an AI tool, because none of that is regulated in legislature in the state of Michigan. So it should only solely be used for things like, you know, planning a party, or, you know, very basic items. So we should probably reread that in its entirety, and to protect the district.
Yep, that makes perfect sense.
And one last question on that, back, so Neola thinks most of their customers are going to use it, and almost every public education in Michigan is using Neola, right?
That are true, true, but true has, their, true's policy is almost identical, and the suggested language for it's almost identical.
So it'd be consistent with you?
Yep, pretty consistent across the board. And then, so, like I said, we'll have, take a look at those, and then we'll, uh, talk about them next month.
Okay. Any other questions on those? All right, next item is a reminder, it's that time of year again, so any letters of interest for board officer positions for next year, please get a letter over to Jan, and we can get those collected and disseminated, um, in support of that organizational meeting. So we all know this, John, as a reminder for you, every January, we have our organizational meeting, where we elect officers, and we set the meeting schedule, and do all our tax stuff for the year, et cetera, et cetera, so.
We do a date on it, yep. We set a date on it.
I don't know if we have a date yet, no.
We're looking at the ninth.
Ninth is the corresponding date, right?
That's Tuesday, though it's not a Monday, maybe this Tuesday after break.
And we always do in that first week back, right?
I have a PTO meeting on Tuesday.
On the eighth, or on the ninth?
It's always a second, usually.
I mean, if, if we want, we could go into that next week, because that's just the first week back, but I.
How urgent is it that we have some of those things in place as the month starts? Is it earlier in the month better?
Do it on Wednesday, maybe on Thursday.
I mean, it's a ten, you, generally, it's a ten-minute meeting.
Yep.
You want to shoot for the tenth, see if that works?
That works.
What day is that, the tenth?
Tenth's on Wednesday, or is that no good for you?
That's what?
What, I mean.
The eighth is a holiday for, there's no school on the eighth?
No, we're, no, we're back.
We can come back that day.
We can do the eighth. Five o'clock, can you guys do, since it's Monday?
Five's a little early.
Six, six o'clock, let's do it. National Championship Football Game, we can't get too late.
Five thirty?
No, six o'clock.
We can do five, that's fine.
Six o'clock works. Let's do six.
So, uh, the eighth?
Yeah. And I like how we just did that, because every time I set up a meeting for outside of the normal one, it's like two days of texting back and forth and figuring this out, so.
Because nobody's looked at their phone yet, Phil.
Okay, so one eighth and six.
Excellent. All right, administrative reports, Mr. Melrose?
Yeah, uh, first thing is, uh, a couple of weeks ago, we, for our professional development, we had Adrian Leckeburger come in, and she talked to the staff about identifying children of trauma, and suggestions on how to support them in the school, in the classroom. It was very well received by the teachers, um, and she's actually come in for us, uh, I think in February at her PD, she's going to do a self-care for the teachers, kind of, as you get in the middle of the year, the dog days there, to kind of, uh, you know, give some suggestions on there, but she did an exceptional job. Uh, next thing is, uh, in our middle school, we, we kind of developed a plan to reward students for their behavior, for the grades, we call it Muskrat levels, and, uh, we used it already for our middle school dance. Uh, kids who got, were in the gold level, they got their money back for the dance. And, and we also had, uh, also one of the seminar days, uh, during the seminar, the kids who had some, uh, that were, that were gold and green levels, got to have free time, uh, in the cafeteria and outside. And then, uh, also last week, we had a kind of a grab and go, where they, we had a cart of different snacks and treats, and they were able to pick from those. And then, we have progress reports coming up, uh, next week, and the kids, uh, uh, the grades based on that, we'll, uh, we're going to have a movie right before break, uh, the kids again, and, uh, and the gold levels will be able to attend, and so it's kind of really gotten the kids' attention, and it's, it's been effective with the kids.
But now, how's, how's, how do you judge the gold level?
It's by their grades. It's like you said, they have As and Bs, and then certainly, they get a green levels. It goes down to, to As, Bs, and Cs, and then also, there's a certain amount of people, like, discipline, you can't wait someone to discipline like that, so it's, it's worked out. Kids all have copies of what that, what it is, so they know exactly what they need to do to, to get those levels. Um, Carabag Movement, they, they completed a, a drive to collect a lot of things for needy families. They did, they completed that a couple of weeks ago. Uh, NHS completed a very successful blood drive, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And right now, Student Council's doing a food drive, uh, to kind of replenish the, uh, blessing boxes in both Algonquin and Lake Township, and that's going to be completed at the end of this week. And then, uh, since the last board meeting, we've had three new clubs for kids. Uh, we've got a board game club, then we've had two of them so far, they've been really well attended. Uh, tomorrow's going to be our first meeting. Ms. Nevek's leading a Glee club, just kind of go over music and kind of, in her room. And then yours truly is running, using, uh, is running a run club for kids. It's open to all kids, but it's basically designed for the cross-country kids to kind of stay active if they're not involved in winter sports, so. Uh, but we've had good showing so far in, in the two clubs at all, we have running, so that's pretty much it.
I heard you're running with them, so.
Yeah, I am.
Good job. Thank you. This is a station.
Uh, my second grade teachers are participating in a pilot called Four Corners. Um, it's actually run by the state of Michigan. They're doing the essentials for math, like, we had literacy essentials before, and now they're transitioning to math. So our second grade teachers have volunteered to pilot this program, to vet it, make sure it's what it should be, and then they'll roll it out to, um, pretty much all the, all the, uh, schools in the state after that. So, um, what you would see, it's about a thirty-minute block a day, and there's like a special corner in the classroom for it, and they cover all the different types of things in that, because what we're finding out is, just math block every day throughout the year, it's hard to get to all the curriculum. So, um, the second grade teachers are very happy so far, because they're already reviewing their last chapter, I doubt, with the kids, but not in a super structured way. So it's been, it's been a really positive thing, and Laura Chambliss is. So it's been, it's been a really positive thing and Laura Chambliss is helping us out with that. But the teachers have to do a lot of extra training for it, so, um, they're really committed to it and are really spending a lot of time. Our therapy dogs and reading dogs are coming back in, into session, so the kids are very excited about that. Last month, we had, um, a vaping, anti-vaping education, uh, by the St. Clair County Health Department. And we opened it up to all fourth, fifth and sixth grade students. Um, families were allowed to opt out if they didn't want their children hearing about that at this time. Uh, it was pretty well attended and, and I think the kids learned a lot from that. And then coming up on this Thursday, our third and fourth graders will be doing their Christmas music show. Our auditorium is like this close from being ready, but I'm assured it's going to be ready. The lights are going to get finished tomorrow and we weren't able to have training on the sound system. So the company is going to send a rep out to help us run it to make sure it's smooth. Um, Student Council's doing pancakes with Santa on December seventh. It's crisp cakes who flips them and the kids catch it with their plates, so we're looking forward to that. We also are doing Muskrat All-Stars for our fifth and sixth grade students. That will be December twelfth to the new rank. And that's for students who have all As and Bs in grade citizenship. So that's pretty well attended. And finally, our sixth grade performing arts class will have their first performance on December fourteenth.
Thank you. Mrs. Sanders?
So at Millside, we've been busy, we're really in the thick of things with reading and getting things going. So we're really working hard on all of our interventions and the staff going there. Um, Steve Belante came over to Millside and did a discovery kitchen with the students. Um, John Highstreet and Sharon Silver attended that and we served them some fancy pasta salad, some fancy orzo pasta. Um, they, they kind of liked it, a lot of them liked it. I was surprised that pesto in it. Um, at Millside and Algonquin, we are part of the start training at the RISA, working with closely with some of our families on making sure, um, we have great plans in place for their students that may have some special needs. So it's really been a wonderful experience to work so closely with those families and the, um, expertise up there to help us make our individual plans and, and what we can do to support. So both of the, both of our schools are going through that right now. On the curriculum side of things, uh, the district has sent Elena Gottler, our social worker, to be trained, to be a trainer of trainers for our CPI course, which is, um, really that response to intervention, de, defeat, or de-escalating tough situations and making sure we keep everybody safe up in the school there. So she is going to train the entire district, including the high school here in January on some of our training days. So we look forward to that. Um, there's also been a group of the elementary staff that has gone to peer-to-peer training. So looking at some of the models where, um, our students model some of those great behaviors and help out other students. Um, a lot of times they'll listen to a student much more than an adult, especially when they're in a heightened state. Up here can often reach them. And then ELA or English Language Arts right now, we are at the point where we have, um, brought it down to one curriculum that we would like to pilot at this point, K six. I also sent samples to the seventh and eighth grade BLA teachers, so they're going to take a look at it and see if that might be something that they want to and invited them to our meetings as well. So we are looking at Amplify, the, the reading series there, um, for K six. K five is a series six eight is a little bit different, um, that blends right into it. So, um, it was a unanimous agreement across all the grade levels, which is truly almost unheard of. It was really exciting. So we are going to do a pilot. They have a great pilot set up where they come out to us multiple times and work with our staff that, um, are going to be piloting in their classrooms with the materials. So we get a lot of hands-on training with them as well as, um, virtual training. Quite a few schools in the state are piloting as we speak this year, this program. I did speak to a couple of schools, like Romeo did the pilot last year and then adopted this year. So, um, a lot of momentum there. There is a cost of piloting, so we have. Yeah, you know, there is. So they, um, will provide the materials, but we pay for the materials. They provide all the training, um, all of that kind of stuff for free. They're going to come out and do that. So that way, we want to have a grade level teacher in every grade pilot, so that way we have a trainer of trainers within a grade level that can do that there. There's two ways we can cost out the program. One is they send the pilot kit, which is really like, um, a twelve weeks' worth of materials. So just a snippet, um, of materials. So they send those out to us and those are what we work on. I also asked them, this is, we're not piloting multiple things, we're piloting one. And really, this is the one, we just want to make sure we're doing it right, we're. So I asked them to cost out, what would it cost to actually do one classroom kit per grade level? So that we don't have to repurchase it next year, you know, to get it in place. So they sent that quote as well. So we're looking at either of those quotes to see what the difference is. There is a cost difference, um, upfront if we go with the full kits, but then it comes off the backend if we don't have to purchase them next year. So I just wanted to put that out, that, that those two things are in the work. We do meet on December eleventh again with the, um, company themselves where they go over all of this information with our staff. Our staff can ask the questions that they need and we hope to start the pilot in the second semester. So after marking period two, so in the beginning of February, um, and run it through the end of the year, like actually start it and keep.
And then full rollout in the fall for everybody?
And then a full rollout in the fall, yes. So we'll be coming to the board then. Um, but I want to have that data and that information where they can speak directly to how it went in their classroom. ELA is a huge purchase, as you know. So just want to make sure that not only are we getting the right products, I believe that wholeheartedly at this point, that we're getting the right product, but that we are well versed in the training to make this a success.
And when you say full rollout in the fall, this, that means you really start using it in the fall? Or you start getting your teachers acclimated to it?
No, we start using it in the fall. So training would begin, so it would be a full adoption at that point.
Switching, yeah, cool.
Yeah. And so you'd have that summer training. The nice thing about Algonquin being a, a nice smaller school district to a point is that if there's four teachers in every grade level, but one of them is a master trainer already, really works nicely. Brooke and I work hard to make sure that we have common grade level planning times, so that way they have that time to work together and make sure that rolls out. And I know Ryan, uh, has a one ELA teacher per grade level as well. So having that sixth, seventh and eighth grade teacher being able to have their own small grouping to work together is huge too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, Miss Brazil, please. Board reports. I know Janice, you mentioned you had something. Right, do you want to?
Yeah, Jennifer and I went to the, um, leadership conference a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, there was a, there was a lawyer conference during the day that we both took. And then we both took several classes as well as, um, attended the delegate assembly, which I was a delegate for. And Nicole, or Jennifer served on the, um, on the committee, the resolution committee. Um, but it was a busy weekend and it was, uh, very informative, learned a lot and appreciate being allowed to go.
Yeah.
Just a couple of highlights, um, I, I attended a clinic that they call Better Together. And it kind of works out with Officer Pahardo being here because they, um, it was, uh, involved Shepherd School, which is a small school, smaller than us in their town. And they're, um, they have like two sheriffs in their town and they're very integrated in with the school system. They, they, it's just interchangeable. The kids from kindergarten all the way up to twelfth grade know this guy. And I just really was impressed with him. And the reason why I was asking about what we do to mitigate any problems in the first place is he has tools to, um, easily make these things happen. And there are grants and things that are, that are used to get these tools, so it's not even really a cost to the district. And just the fact that he had such a great relationship with the staff and the students and the community, that's something we can do here too, because we're not a very big community either. And if we can get to the bottom of that, then hopefully we don't have to worry so much about the worst of the worst happening. So I thought that was great.
Janice, when, when you say tools, like communication tools?
Uh, one of them is called, uh, it was actually, and I wonder if, um, Mrs. Luckenbacher is going to bring that up at all because you get it through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. It's an app, um, and it's a program. It's called Handle With Care. It's where if something does happen off a school time, it's an automatic, once, something like, once a report is generated at the station, it gets feedback to the school and vice versa, so that there's always an open line of communication. I thought that was awesome. Another thing that's good, um, one of the parents brought up at a, at one of our other meetings was about, okay, we have iChats, but when kids, when parents come to volunteer and this and that, we don't write at the door. Um, you can't do an iChat, you know, so they have a machine where you put your ID in, it runs a full background check. Um, and then you just have them on file, so that if anything were to happen, it doesn't come back immediately, but at least you have a paper trail of who this person was, you know what I mean? I thought that was fantastic. Um, he did bring up, um, that was called, that's through Raptor Technologies. You can get a grant for that. Um, the other thing was also a, um, oh, I don't have it written down. But there's like another kit you can get that for instantly, um, if there were a major problem and somebody needs a tourniquet, whatever, everybody's trained, um, all staff, so that they can immediately stop the bleed, even kids, they'll train the kids as well. I just thought all of that was great. And I spoke with you before about, you know, maybe getting some sort of a training or something or information or education in place to these kids so that they do understand the dangers of going places and there are guns and, you know what I mean? Just having this conversation and not making it so spooky to me made the whole trip worth it. Um, because we can do it because they do it here. And I have the guy's number, I have the guy's everything. So we could get ahold of him and they could talk and find out what they do and see what would work for our district because they've been doing it. And I just thought that was fantastic. I'm not going to go long with everything else, but that was huge. There was AI, that was awesome. We'll go into that another time. Um, real quick, I do want to say I brought up at the last meeting that we talked about, um, BAFSA being up, well, it passed the Senate, it's going to the House. Well, now they're in recess until the beginning of the year. However, um, Jana put, um, representatives for Talon DeBoyer up on the website for us. I'm also going to give you information for, um, a link that we can put up there where you can get automatic updates on what is new in legislation, so you guys can have a voice on what we want and what we don't want in our school system and in our town, because we all need to be involved. That's what I.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Mr. Latos?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Brooke talked a little bit about the auditorium. Um, good, good to go. Again, we'll have somebody from the company that's there to help us out on the first night. But then the idea on that is we're going to get several of our staff members trained in that. And, uh, so that way we'll have a lot of people that can run the auditorium for us, so it'd be nice to have that in place. Uh, heating and cooling over at Millside, so we're down to the classroom, uh, units, like I explained, they've all had controls put on them. Uh, we're down to three rooftop units, um, for the bigger areas. The multipurpose room, Melissa's office and computer lab, I believe, are the three, um, last three that we have to do. In the process of getting a crane scheduled, come put those up on top. And once they're up on top and in place, they'll have that, uh, hooked up and that's the end of that project. So it's been, been a while to get it done, but they should be up and running and good to go moving forward. Uh, did talk just a really briefly about the policies, uh, for the health department. I will provide you with a packet of those tomorrow. Again, most of that stuff we've already talked to and they covered in the presentation that they did back in the summer. But just want to make sure that you guys have a copy of those. It's nothing that we're going to adopt as policy. It's just their policies that we're going to give consent to. Um, and then the very last thing, we're looking, our head, head already, uh, to next year for some of our sinking fund projects. Um, with the idea that, uh, we're going to do some replacement or do some repairs in the parking lot here. They'll still leave us some funding, um, taking a look out at, we know that we're in need of bleachers out at the football stadium. Um, one of the things that we're looking to get a price on, and then also our, uh, our track is in some need of repair out there. So, um, going to get prices on those depending on what they come back with, will depend on where we're going to go with that. And I'll certainly let you guys know, so we can talk about those a little before we make any decisions on that.
We're talking accessible bleachers?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah. And, and just a matter of, we're trying to figure out if we're looking at the same size and then kind of, um, how big the bleachers are, kind of determines how big your press box could be and some of those kind of things, so. But again, what we're expecting, Chip Hendricks has been getting us pricing on that, so we're keeping after them because we know if we want to get any of that stuff done this summer, we probably got to go out for bid in January.
Right now.
Yeah, so, I kind of know that's the case, so that's it.
I, I had a, a question for you, and this is just kind of a wild card out, out of the blue, but, and you don't have to answer it right now if you don't know. I was curious, what is it looking like these days with our kids coming in versus calling in sick or staff calling in sick? And like, remember post-pandemic, it was a little bit rough where everyone had gotten used to that and that was, there was a trend there, isn't, are we?
It's bending, it's bending back a little bit. You know, the biggest part was getting our kids back in the schools and, and even more importantly. Um, Ryan, how many do we got online at the high school? I mean.
It's, it's maybe eight now.
Not even, not even doubled. I mean, so, yeah, we've got everyone back. Attendance wise, you know, attendance has been a struggle, but I think we're doing, we're, we're on the, on the upswing. Yep, it's, it's better than it's been, but it's still not where, you know, not where we want it to be, but making, uh, making, making a comeback.
Yeah, good. All right. Any more questions for us, Latos? Okay, we have two visitors, three, okay. Uh, Mr. Jesse Babson, here to talk about inappropriate teacher associate accusation.
Absolutely.
Fine.
All right. Sorry to follow all that. Um, all right, so I'm going to get into it. I'm here out of concern for rumors that have been spread about, I'm going to be reading this, uh, so I can get through it. I'm here out of concern for rumors that have been spread about me throughout Algonquin and the high school. I want to clear up the situ, I want to clear the situation up publicly. I have tried privately with no resolution. I am limited to what I can share here since I am dealing with a lawyer. I have been dealing with a personal harassment issue since two thousand nineteen. The issue had nothing to do with the school system. Once certain individuals ran out of ways to attack my character, they turned to the school system. They then told I got, uh, uh, excuse me, they then told Algonquin staff and one other staff I was some sort of a pedophile. This was told to me directly from the individual who made the accusation. I immediately went to Algonquin and asked if this, this, if they actually sentenced to them, and I was told, yes. But we know you, it goes in one ear and out the other. I went to my lawyer the same day and he advised me to write a cease and desist. I gave a copy to Algonquin, Officer Pahardo, and a certified copy to the individuals whom I had an acid issue with, as well as Mr. Highstreet. I was informed by Ms. Pataki that the same individuals had requested that I don't interact with their kids. I'm sorry, I should probably link with, uh, I was a volunteer at the, with the school system, uh, that I don't interact with their kids. I was also told the same individual's sister had requested I didn't interact, that I didn't interact with their kid as well. I've never met the sister or her kid. Again, they are doing whatever they can to make it appear that I am an issue. Shortly after this, I was emailed and told it was best I don't volunteer because I was talking to kids whose parents had asked me not to. So I, but also, so I wasn't accused of anything inappropriate. I spoke without, about this. As an adult and a professional, I had no issues respecting Ms. Pataki and Ms. Lestage's directions. Besides these two issues, I have never had any interaction with any parent ever that resulted in me being asked to not talk to their kid. I can't even think of a situation where, uh, I've been in that would even be appropriate. And I also have no concern with being accused of being inappropriate at all. I've spoken with Ms. Pataki, Ms. Lestage, Officer Pahardo, Mr. Highstreet as well about this issue with these individuals over the years. And I believe I did everything I could in my power to protect my. And I believe I did everything I could in my power to protect myself from these individuals, but I just keep finding myself in these impossible situations. Now, which, uh, I'm gonna stop there. Mr. Latos, I, uh, we had a discussion, and I stand by what I told you. And Ms. Uh, Lestage, uh, I respect your decision. Your concern is the kids in the school, not, not issues between adults. I understand that, and that's why, uh, I bowed out gracefully. Now, the main reason I had to come here today is to discuss these pedophile comments and how they have made their way to the high school. My son Gunner is in band and he has had an issue communicating his schedule with me, so that resulted in me having to go to the high school October 10th and looking for Ricky Turner. I was told the band people were gone, so I found an adult who gave me her phone number. So I sent her a text message stating this is Gunner's father. While I was still in the school, my wife called me and said she had talked to Ricky outside. So I sent another message stating, apparently you talked to Erica, I'm saving your number. She never responded to either of my texts. Now, the following week, Gunner failed again to tell me he was going to East China Stadium with a band group. I had someone else drop him off that day, and I was told they were getting on buses. I couldn't reach Gunner, so I went to the high school again, and there was no one there. So I called Ricky Turner and got through a voicemail that I wasn't sure if Gunner was with her or not, and if she could call me back. She never did. So that brings us to October 27th. I dropped Gunner off at school for band practice and I walked in with him. I saw an adult at a desk with kids around her, so I asked her if she was Ricky Turner, and she stated, yes. I said, I am Jesse Babson, Gunner's father. I called you last week and I left a few messages. Did you get it? She stated she did. However, I'm not sure how you got my phone number, but I don't take parent phone calls, only emails. This caught me off guard, and I said, so you think it's appropriate that you have my son under your supervision outside the school's property, and you're telling me I cannot get ahold of you? And she states, I think it's inappropriate to parent calls my personal cell phone. I'm not a doctor, I'm not on call. You have my son. So I got her email and turned to leave. Now, she clearly saw I was agitated by this encounter, and as I opened the door, she says out loud in a sarcastic tone, I might do, there's kids sitting around this desk, have a nice day. Now, I'm not gonna sing it like she did, but I felt her intention was purely sarcastic and aimed at the needlehead. I'm sure you can all imagine that. Ricky had multiple opportunities to respond to my two texts and my one phone call and inform me this was her personal number, but she made no attempt at all to contact me, apparent concern about the whereabouts of her kid. I had to track her down. I left the school and emailed Al, Ryan, and Ricky Turner, so I, so these three all were CC'd on this email. The next day I was told by another band parent their kids had come home, and told them that Ricky Turner read that email to the students. She also made a reference to me being a pedophile, who was kicked out of Elgin for touching kids in the bathroom. I sat down with Mr. Melrose and the vice principal. However, Ricky Turner wasn't present, neither was Al. Uh, so I felt I wasn't able to di- directly, uh, speak to the person that made this accusation that, that, that wronged me. Right, it matters that Ricky had, that she had an inappropriate conversation, but wasn't allowed to know, but I wasn't allowed to know what action was being taken against her. I find that hard to swallow, seeing as how she had no issue creating a huge issue for me with no regards to my privacy or the fact my son is in her class or the damage that this type of rumor can do. Now, I don't think I have to cover how professional this whole encounter was, and in three to four minutes I spoke with Ricky Turner, I thought I was talking to a child. I have no faith that she is a professional, and she clearly has an issue with just being an adult. In what world is she so comfortable that she thinks it's okay to bring up rumors like that and share an email that was sent to her bosses and intended as a complaint with her students? What kind of environment are these kids in? Now, my sons are being asked if it's true I touched kids. My friends are asking me about these rumors. How healthy are my son's high school years gonna be now? So now I feel like the only avenue I have to work, so now I feel like the only avenue I have is to work with my lawyer to make my voice heard. I've gone through all, I've gone through the proper channels with the district. Now I'm here in front of you all. My kids enjoy, my kids enjoy being here. Uh, we, we've all run out together. I would hate to have to hold them for the rumors and the behavior of this teacher. However, I feel like my hands are tied. This is now mid-November, and nothing has come of this except to cause further strife for my boys and me. I have spoken with my lawyer and I'm just, I have spoken with my lawyer, and I just am not sure what I am willing to do at this point. I feel Ricky Turner's demeanor, I feel Ricky Turner's demeanor and attitude are, that she can do what, what she wants and has no fear of being remotely. And I'm just not comfortable knowing my son or any of our kids are in such an unpredictable environment. So with that all being said, all my experiences with the school district as a whole have generally been predictable and positive. And I have great respect for all of them. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next up is Dave Allison, here to talk about education.
Hello, my name's Dave Allison. I'm a lifelong resident of St. Clair County, and, uh, I've contributed financially to Elgin Act School Districts for almost 50 years now. If you need a program, the grant is on the bottom. So anyways. I've come here to request that Elgin Act Schools return the teachings of fundamental principles that for the first 200 years served our country well. Oddly, several years ago, a group of people, I, I would call them at the very least misguided, chose to discontinue this education. Part of their argument was that no individual should impose their belief on another, let an individual come to their own conclusion without any biased persuasion. That premise alone is severely flawed. I will illustrate their misguided actions in a tangible way. I'd like to present this argument. Imagine for a moment, leaving here this evening, only to find out the stop signs, the traffic signals have all been removed. After traveling a short distance and experiencing some near-death experiences, you'll quickly realize that those objects have been placed there by law to protect you. Through education, we're talking that stop signs, red lights, double yellow lights are there. They're not just suggestions. Their mandatory compliance has lessened you endanger your life. The educational book that was removed, portions of it are over 4,000 years old. Until recent years, these teachings were held fast as paramount truths to be taught and made to maintain civil order for others to, for others as a spiritual order as well. To ensure compliance, punishments are imposed on those who break the law, both man imposing and God imposing. I'm glad Officer Dave was here this evening. What does he represent? He represents the law, law and order. He's, he's, he's in our community to make sure people abide by the man imposed law, and I'm not against it. So like I say, to, to ensure compliance, so punishments are imposed when we break the laws, both man imposing and God imposing. Despite, despite the book being removed, the law still exists. The one who made the laws held within God has assessed penalties. Some are self-imposed. Speeding may result in your injury or death. That's a self-imposed consequence of breaking the law. The moral degradation of our society is primarily self-imposed, yet are a result of disregard for the law God established long ago. There's a passage in this book that states, "They perish because they refuse to love the truth and so be saved. For this reason, God sends them a powerful delusion, so they will believe a lie, so that all will be condemned who have not believed the truth but have delighted in wickedness." We've become delusional. The sanctity of life, gender, marriage, family have all become under severe attack. My request to the district is to restore these laws, starting with simply posting the Ten Commandments. As you know, the Lemon Law struck down the Supreme Court. It's no longer, schools are not, um, restricted from, uh, posting such things in the school. So post the Ten Commandments with the hallways frequently traveled by students. As with a stop sign, I don't question who put it there. I trust it. It was put there for my own bad feet. I will close with this morning, not for me, this morning's not for me, but the one who gave us the book. Since you disregarded all my advice and do not accept my rebuke, I in turn will laugh when your disaster strikes you. I will mock when your calamity overtakes you, when calamity overtakes you like a storm, when disaster sweeps over you like a whirlwind, when disaster and trouble overwhelm you. Then they will call me, but I will not answer. They will look for me, but they will not find me. Since they hated knowledge and did not choose to fear the Lord, since they would not accept my advice and spurn my rebuke, they will eat the fruit of their waste and will be filled with the fruits of their schemes. For the waywardness of the simple will kill them, and the complacency of fools will destroy them. I think the fact that we had to have Austin Professor Dave come in here today, I think he's a, he's, um, example he brought, why he's here is these penalties that are being imposed on us because of our non-compliance. When I, when I attended school years ago, this was unheard of. We had, we had kids, we had, we had shooting teams at school. Kids brought guns on the bus, nobody even thought a thing about it. Or this changed. It's not the guns, it's our society. And why? It's because we've taken these principles out of our school. And so that's why I've come here today, just to request that Elgin Act Schools would consider again reestablishing these rules that serve us well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And up next we have Ms. Aine Tesh. To discuss, uh, please.
Yes, my name is Aine Tesh. I'm a retired attorney, and I'm part of the new movement that is spreading across the country. And it is to have the Ten Commandments displayed in every classroom, in every school in the United States. And since I live here in Elgin and, um, and love this, uh, city, um, I have a gift. Do you have, by the way? I have a, thank you. Um, I have a gift for the, uh, may I, I give it to you? The Ten Commandments. So based on what Mr. Allison said, um, recent Supreme Court decisions have now struck down the Lemon Test, which was the separation of church and state, and, uh, reversed decades of these legal cases that, and have now cleared the way for putting the Ten Commandments back in the school, prayer back in the school, protecting the constitutional rights. And just for a couple of brief cases, uh, number one was May 2nd, 2022, and you probably didn't read about it in the news, uh, but in a nine to zero victory, a unanimous victory by the Supreme Court. They ruled that now you cannot censor Christian viewpoints. Uh, and then they went on to say, they talked about June 27th, 2022, and I'm sure you heard about this case. Because that, when, that is when the court ruled that in a six to three decision in favor of the high school football coach praying with his team. And as a result of that decision, I believe there was a $1 million reward, award for that basketball coach, for that football coach for being fired. So my point is that, um, the decisions now by the Supreme Court, I don't know who makes decisions to raise the pride flag. I don't know who makes decisions about having safe places in the school or, um, certain, um, pornographic books in the school that we all hear about. I don't know who makes those decisions. But I'm here today to ask all of you to make the decision to hang the Ten Commandments in a visible place. I would suggest at the end of grade of the school. Uh, and the most important thing is that, um, this is for the children. We, we see what is going on, and, uh, it, we gotta do something. And the Supreme Court has now opened the door, um, for this change. It's been five decades since they have, um, get struck down all of these, our religious liberties and for the protection of the children. So, um, if, in conclusion, these landmark victories, and this is from a publication that lists all of the, um, cases. These landmark victories are monumental in restoring religious freedom. And these wins have provi, have now provided a surge of strength. And serve as a reminder that it's never too late to change the course of history. Former British Prime Minister Winston Churchill, as he said, "Never give in." And these inspiring words ring true today as people of faith are engaged in a global war of worldviews, a culture war which requires firm resolve and tireless faith. Even with countless similar cases pending at every level, it's a new day for religious freedom, and we have tremendous hope that our fight for the soul of America is not in vain, and we will never quit fighting. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And when will I have, we have a decision on that?
Um, well, it, this kind of speaks a little bit to Ms. Tesh, uh, board policy as well. And we review our board policies at twice a year, and we go through and take a look at them. I know our board policies do address some things in terms of posting religious materials and things of that sort, so, would be something that we would have to look at.
Well, a month, two months? Because your board policies, if they violate the Constitution.
They don't violate the Constitution.
Well, I would like me to present these cases to your board. Who is your board? Is this the board?
Yeah.
Who is your lawyer?
Uh, but we, we have a couple lawyers. We have a lawyer through our, uh, St. Clair.
Well, I'll be back next month if I don't hear from him.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. We have a couple of action items. First item is the approval of the audit. That Ken, you read out to us earlier today. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the 2022, 2023 audit report as presented and submitted by the auditing firm, Offlewis, and nope. Support.
We've been supported. Any other questions?
Thanks, Dorothy.
Good job, Dorothy. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you post? That passes. Up next is the Elgin Act Childcare Toddler Playground that went out to bid for the new playground. Would anyone like to make a motion on that?
I'll motion that the Board award the Elgin Act Childcare Toddler Playground project the lowest bidder in Great Lakes Recreation in the amount of $39,442.
Support. We've been supported. Any questions or comments?
Just wanted to point out on that, when that was the, that had gotten brought to the board back quite some time ago, and we'll wait to see if there was a childcare grant that would cover the amount of that, and it didn't. So we ended up going out for bid. We're in a spot where we can all just say.
That's going to be over in the playground?
Yes, it's right back, so it's, if you know where the GSRP one is, it's kind of right beyond that, not all the way to where the big park, the, the.
Is that a special need kid? Part of that, or I don't know what they have in their toddler program, or?
Yeah, they're, I, I know that they're all, yeah, it, they pretty much, it's all inclusive, John. I don't know that it's, um, you know, I don't know that there's anything necessarily beyond that for the special needs kids, but I, I know it's what they call them all, inclusive playgrounds.
And I'm saying it also too, that we had started a while back, we were gonna build up that playground over at the Lions Field for special needs, and COVID hit.
Yeah.
And so the money was given to the church, which I have specifically to be used. I know we, we came in at, at Millside and, and purchased some equipment, and that's why I'm saying if not, or if there's other needs or whatever, I know she's not here, but that's relative, available for whatever we can do too.
And I think.
That that was just the question, if, well, we do this, but we wish we could have done this.
Right. I honestly, I think that this, this one was pretty, like I said, when we went out for bid on it, they kind of designed and set it back.
If I figured they would have to now.
Yeah. There's, it's not like, not like before, like we used to be able to do this.
The metal.
Yeah.
Spinning mirrors around.
Get your skin off.
Rocks.
They're out there, they're out there with the, with the rulers measuring to make sure you got enough mulch over there now.
Yeah.
Your story.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any post? And that passes. And then we have our two overnight trip requests for wrestling, the first being December 8th and 9th. Coming up, would anyone like to make a call?
I'll motion that the Board of Education approves the wrestling team's overnight trip for class to Cedar Spring, Michigan, on December 8th and 9th, 2023 for a wrestling tournament. The cost of the trip will be paid by parents and funds raised by the team. There will be no cost to the district.
Support. We've been supported. Any questions? None. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any post? That passes. And then we have our second one for January 12th and 13th, 2024. That passes. And then we have our second one for January 12th and 13th, 2024. Anyone like to take that one?
I'll motion again that the Board of Education approves the wrestling team's overnight trip request to Fort Wayne, Indiana on January 12th and 13th, 2024 for a wrestling tournament. The cost of the trip will be paid by parents and funds raised by the team. There will be no cost to the district.
We've supported. Any questions on that one?
Yeah. I know they're going out of state. No, they, they have, apparently at the beginning, MHSAA, that's all been done, that's been approved.
Yeah, I know we ran, we talked about it, had run in that before, playing basketball, so.
Please provide positive feedback to Brian Rachel, that getting these, that part in advance is nice too.
Absolutely will, yep. Oh, okay, gotta catch it.
Perfect. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post? All right, that passes. Uh, and without Andy, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post?